We will invoke the rules. If we cause all, if we cause all the evil rules from the 3.2, invoking the messy manner of and business that will be de-mesured by this body will take it. No one should cause the same as the others. You cannot recognize the speaker. You say the answer and agree now to your telephone now. You cannot come and cause the same as we have come to tell you right now. Because if you want to pick a hand, we will pick a hand.
No time, no time, no time. Omo Kolema, please, sir. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Omo Kolema, Yanki Shabina Jones. Yanki Shabina Jones, Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Sadie? Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Chief Kweh, who are you, my general? Chief Kweh, who are you, who are you? Omo Kolema, Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Please have your seat. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Sadie? Omo Kolema, Omo Kolema, Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema, ah. Omo Kolema, Omo Kolema. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Omo Kolema, please have your seat. Omo Kolema, please have your seat.
The poor desert city of a first quarter and a savage country that will not survive for events of the political and religious leaders of the Republic of Liberia. Charles Denny, what are they doing? What are they doing for fun at dinner? One such a person, Adam. Two players. Three rockers. Four, we need to relax our own amendment and allow some.
Omo Kolema, Omo Kolema.
Five copper.
Omo Kolema, please have your seat.
Six copper standing committee report. Seven copper special committee report. Eight copper promotion bill and resolution. Non-business or spiritual desk. Honorable, our communications from honorable Anthony Weller, Representative Letha, District Number Two, and Honorable Austin B Taylor, Representative Letha, District Number Three, Member of the County, the State of the President and Indulgence of the House to invite the RGA along with their technical team as well as the management of Lone Star MTN and Orange Liberia to provide technical details regarding the constant network problems in the southeastern region of Liberia. He from the Asia from the Liberian National Police requesting for engagement with persons of interest in ongoing police investigation. See communication from the Superdose family noted by the House of Representatives of the District of the Representatives, bringing up these Superdose in local places of a program through town. Team National Union in Level of German. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the reading of the draft agenda for today's business meeting, the full day setting, Thursday, January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Clerk. With the reading of the agenda, Omo Kolema, it is a great pleasure. Omo Kise, colleague.
Honorable distinguished speaker, our deputy speaker, fellow colleagues. Having listened to the reading of the agenda, I move, if I can obtain a second, and the agenda be accepted, and then from part of our today's business.
With the motion, two of us second there. Are you all ready to vote? All ready, Omo Kolema?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, to my distinguished uh colleagues from Nofa County, Chair on National Security, I will be ready to vote. I will be ready to vote if this simple amendment could be accepted owing to the fact that we have issues of national concern from the Ghana. And Ghana, I can see carry the communications informing us of one of our former colleague who uh were called by the Almighty God. I will be ready to vote on this. Uh, Ghana, I can be noted and leadership takes seats of him and work along with the family to have the proper thing done, to have our colleague, our former colleague, a from a particular.
To the movement, okay.
To the, to our distinguished colleagues from my Kibee, I only reject.
With the movement, with the motion, are you ready to vote? All those who are saying yeah, against? The motion is carried. Call for petition.
There is no petition, I was under.
Call for standing committee's report.
No standing committee report, I was under.
Call for special committee's report.
No special committee report.
Call for motion, bill, and resolution.
No motion, no bill, no resolution.
District of Speaker's backs.
Yes, sir. Communications from Honorable Anthony Williams and Honorable Austin B Taylor. Dear Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, I write to pray the indulgence of this office's body to invite the authority of the Liberian Telecommunication Authority, RTA, along with their technical team as well as the authority of Liberia Lone Star MTN and Orange Liberia to provide technical details regarding the constant network problems within the southeastern region of Liberia. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, the southeastern region has been experiencing persistent network issues that have severely impacted the daily lives of our citizens. The poor network condition has posed significant challenges and hardships, affected normal economic activities, and caused harmful suffering to the people. Their unreal, unreliable network has disrupted business operations leading to financial losses for entrepreneurs and traders who rely on stable communication for transactions and coordination including mobile money services. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, given the gravity of the situation, it is imperative that we see a comprehensive understanding of the technical issues and the measures being taken to address them. Therefore, I respect for the request that the MTN Lone Star MTN and Orange Liberia provide detailed explanations and proposed solution to alleviate the network problems in the southeastern region. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. Honorable Anthony F Williams, Representative in Letha, District Number Two, Plivo Solomon, District of Maryland County, communication from Honorable Taylor. Dear Speaker Koon, Honorable Speaker and esteemed colleagues, I wish to draw the attention of the Plenary to the significant deficiencies in the GSM network coverage within Maryland County. A staggering eighty percent of the residents in Maryland County are currently facing challenges related to inadequate mobile network connectivity. Consequently, I propose that we stand and give attention to the management, representatives of Lone Star GSM and Orange GSM to come before Plenary to provide clarity regarding the factors contributing to the inadequate network services currently affecting Maryland County and to discuss potential solutions moving forward. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, your Honorable Austin B Taylor, Representative, District Number Three, Maryland County. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, those are the two communications from your two colleagues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Clerk. From the communication from our two colleagues from Maryland County, Omo Williams and Omo Taylor, Omo colleagues, it is a great pleasure. Omo Marko Thomas.
The right, the right, the right arm of written that we call Speaker of the Fifty-Fifth co-presiding co-presiding on the Thomas Patafala, representing the Islamic people of this one Nofa County. Fellow colleagues, having listened to a very important and essential letter that has to do with the fluctuation of our network as it relates to telecommunication in Liberia. Of course, communication plays a pivotal role in our operations. So I want to move, Mr. Speaker, that the LTA and the Lone Star Telecommunications Corporation and also Orange, Orange and the nature of posts and telecommunication should appear before this body next week, Tuesday. All GSM company, all GSM company to qualify that including the director, Yasi, who is a technicality to appear before us, both the regulatory and the implementation arm of our telecommunication authority to appear and tell the Liberian people why our people in North West Town they got to claim the tree before they can have conversation for your family across the district. Why across the river our people there in Wou got to go claim the tower so they can have network. If I can't see a second.
Honorable colleagues, with the motion, second there, Omo Marko Thomas, and second there. Are you all ready to vote?
All ready.
All ready, motion there.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, to the movement, I'll be ready to vote if you can accept this simple amendment allowing the proper amount of this communication. These are many, uh, let me do two minutes to expand and highlight a little bit the situation and trigger this important conversation, the life.
The issue, the issue of the issue of impact of telecommunication within the image of the Republic of Liberia is synonymous to, is unique to every other county and district across the country. You don't need a rocket scientist to tell you that someone in Wokonti has to go to another town before they can get signal to communicate. So, uh, honorable distinct representative from the Islamic district of Grand Tidak County, I want to only reject.
Your members late of the motion, Omo colleague, are you all ready to vote? All those who are saying yeah? Against? Honorable Deputy Chief Clerk, Chief and the colleague. Next.
Communication from the Liberian National Police. January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Honorable Richard M Koon, Speaker, Honorable House of Representatives, capital building, Morogya, Liberia. Reference. Request for engagement with questions of interest in ongoing police investigations. Dear Honorable Speaker, the Liberian National Police, LMP, extends its highest regard to you and members of the House of Representatives. We acknowledge the gravity of the recent fire incident at the Capitol Building and its profound impact on our nation's legislative activities and heritage. As part of the ongoing investigations into this unfortunate event, the LMP has identified several persons of interest who in such would be crucial to uncovering the circumstances surrounding the incident. Given the sensitive, sensitive nature of this investigation and the need for transparent proceedings, we would like to inform you that we have identified members of your house as persons of interest to this ongoing investigation and will be calling them for questioning. Those concerns, those concerns are, one, Honorable D. Fonati Kofa. Two, Honorable S. Foco. Three, Honorable Abu H. Kamara. Four, Honorable Jackson W. Sibo. Five, Honorable Priscilla E. Cooper. Six, Honorable J. Marvin Coe. Seven, Honorable Jacob C. Derby. The LMP is committed to conducting this investigation professionally to ensure that all individuals' rights are respected. We are confident that the cooperation of the House of Representatives will significantly enhance our efforts to protect future occurrences of such incidents. We respectfully request if you will be identified representatives at a convenient time to discuss the terms and framework of their participation in this investigation. LMP is prepared to provide any necessary support and coordinate closely with your office to ensure a smooth and effective process. We appreciate your understanding and support in this matter of national importance. Sincerely, Gregory O. W. Coleman, Inspector General, Liberian National Police. CC, Honorable Young Lee.
This is breaking news. The Liberian National Police has written the House of Representatives acknowledging or giving an information that several representatives have been identified as persons of interest in the fire incident at the House of Representatives.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Clerk. Honorable Deputy Speaker, fellow colleagues, in the reading from the the communication from the National Police requesting non-personal interests to avail themselves for investigation, it is a great pleasure. Omo Anthony Williams.
Honorable Speaker, reading number Koon, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable Thomas P. Fala, distinguished colleagues, having listened to the letter from the Chief Clerk, I move, if I can obtain a second, that the letter be open for discussion across all nations of ideas in the public floor, after which time the motion be taken for the submission of this colleagues to the lateral police investigation.
For the six years I've been here, the premise on the floor is that you give one motion on a particular subject matter. So, say for instance, if you want the communication to be open for debate, you open it for debate. The debate will inform the body as to whether your motion should be taken.
Find way forward or to say we should open it after we it should be done soon, so you cannot decide for either form of amendment. So let the information be, the communication should be open for discussion. The debate will inform us what we think.
No time, no time, for whatever we wish to take a motion. So, to my member colleague.
So Redna is the way and pressure of the members of the House of Representatives as to whether they can submit the several colleagues that have been identified by the police as persons of interest to the fire incident.
My colleague, I move, if I can obtain a second, that the communication that was read by the Chief Clerk, the active Chief Clerk, the deputy Clerk, that it be open for discussions. Like I said, it corresponds to a lot of ideas, after which it is only debate. Thank you.
That was Anthony Williams from Maryland County making a motion that the matter be open for discussion.
Honorable Presided, Co-Presided, distinguished colleagues, the movement, comrade Apple. Considering the nature of the communication rate that involves our distinguished colleagues and it has to do with legality, I will appeal to the conscience of the movement that since this involves our colleagues in balance of what's happening, we have one body, one family. I would suggest that leadership takes siege of this matter, send it to the committee on judicial from our legal team, our company, our colleagues, to abide by exactly what the police are requesting. But the openness matter for discussion, I think it will create more votes than healing. Because if we already know the matter, we've not had a bar invitation to investigate our colleagues. Or what basis do we want the openness for discussion? To get a fresh views. So, comrade, I believe my few words have sent message to you and I believe you will accept this amendment. It's on appeal and I believe I get a lot of support on this one.
Emmanuel Dan from District Seven, Monsor Haro County, appealing to the movement, Anthony Williams, that this should not be open for discussion, but leadership of the House of Representatives should take siege of the matter.
Uh, Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I think what Emmanuel Dan said is very important. All of us here know why we're going on the Capitol Hill in the town of our crisis. So for us to open this letter now to discuss it, for me, I agree with you, not to be necessary, because we already know what happened. This has been precedent of all of us. So when the police have asked us to make sure that our police go there to ask some question, the best thing we can do is to ice our lawyer, have him pay by this body, to escort them to the police station. We saw those who are working on the general committee so that we can see what we can out of accusation against our police. So I really want to order it. Just table it, instead of going deep into it, it will create another noise, because nothing here that we don't know. So we believe that what, that thing is very important because if we go into this thing now, I don't want to say different, different thing. While we try to unify ourselves, it will not be good for us. So we know what happened. So I, I do owe that suggestion.
So several others, including uh, Mbato Speaker, J. Fonati Kofa, have been asked by the police to turn themselves over for further investigation. They are identified as persons of interest. So J. Fonati Kofa, Abu Bana Kamara, Jackson Sibo. Did I hear Yucheng Koli, Jacob Derby. Just several, several of them will get the full listing of the representatives who have been identified by the police as persons of interest in the investigations.
Brother from the First Assembly Hall High School in high, knows to have been listed to the senior area house, the east room. We are on a plea, as a release to we should now open the conference level discussion. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, so we can.
All right. Omo, carry that. Omo, carry that.
Uh, Mr. Speaker.
So Anthony Williams, as the movement has decided that this matter should be open for discussion and it should not go to leadership because it has to do with the uh fire incident at the House of Representatives or the Capitol Building.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Due to the sensitive nature of this issue, Mr. Speaker, in accordance with Article Three of the Constitution that provides three coordinate branches of government, that the executive tool, the Justice Ministry, the Liberian National Police is coordinating with us to launch an investigation into an incident that occurred on the Capitol ground. Any attempt opening this to discussing will be prejudicing the entire investigation. I will be ready to vote if our distinguished colleagues from Maryland County who accept that this communication be noted and leadership takes siege of it and work along with the National Police and our police measures to see the way forward.
The movement.
So Representative Clarence Carr from Magibe County, District Five, is again pleading with his colleague to accept that the matter is not open for discussion but taken to um, the leadership of the House of Representatives.
Distinguished colleagues, having listened to the member colleague of ours to uh uh Clarence Carr of Magibe County. I swear it's him. uh, Clarence Carr of Maggibee County, I saw it said.
With the motion, with the motion, are you all ready to vote? Honorable Speaker, what say here? Agreed? Honorable Deputy Chief Clancy, I'm reporting. Next. Okay, to all, to all our colleagues, I'd leave a mention as a related police investigation, please meet me tomorrow in my office by twelve, so they finalize the arrangement of the rules, get the police involved and, by what means the rules, and they should meet me yesterday by twelve, I'll be along with the deputy in my office to discuss the issue and waiting for you.
So the Speaker, Richard Koon, has now asked here the colleagues involved, some of them are, are suspended, but they should come at his office tomorrow afternoon to discuss the way forward in, uh, presenting them to the Liberian National Police for further interrogation, um, into the fire incident at the House of Representatives. You are watching Spoon TV live, my name is Haji Masali.
The motion raised by Honorable Williams was specific that it goes to a sedative. I don't encourage talking about you, the deputy, and the parties involved.
How involved is a sedative?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. The motion, the motion, Frige Boda, leader shit, because the fucking matter, I've answered, you beat us tomorrow, yeah, so please. Don't let me know, see, man? Okay, please carry on, yeah, man, man? Chief, can you please carry on?
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, ask yeah, understand how long the speech has been, said, and everyone was rejected, and so we made a conversation. January fourteen, twenty-five. Yeah, Mr. Speaker, and that was the House of Representatives.
Honorable Speaker, honorable Speaker, distinguished colleagues, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you information. A letter written by the police is rapidly written by a justice ministry, not a police. So we tell the letter, tell the justice minister, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You are not here, you are not here, justice, you are not here. Yeah, huh? You are, you are meeting the Mr. Justice, you are not here, so you know. Can you carry on, please?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, members of the House of Representatives, the justice and passion of the House of Liberia, Balu Sobadou de France. We have deeply saddened to share the news of the passion of our dear father, Honorable President Balu Sobadou de France. He passed away peacefully on Sunday, January twelve, twenty-five, at home in Massachusetts, USA. Honorable Sobadou was a pillar of our family, a tireless advocate for Liberia and the passion of his family for the people of Guas, San Gara District, Rango, Napier, from Quante Au Bas, to Quante Eleven. As the champion of small businesses in Liberia, he will leave his, for his tenacity and leadership. Honorable, he passed the building to rest in his beloved project, Liberia, to start a foundation of life and interment of Bira in the road of Sanne, Nguan, and Opa, and the park. Sincerely, the love is of the Lord, the same of my squad. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues and fellow friends, there is a video on the communication with Sobadou's family, the best part of the path of the former representative, in passing, Honorable Balu Sobadou de France. Thank you, sir.
Maybe the little. So we may see this individual to the procedure. Okay, one of us, we are, we are people from the police who are part of the, who are part of the soldiers, this is a large person, we appeal and please, and feel the response very only you are our people. No matter what the differences are, please follow the sona this time in one day, like this my feeling. Please reconsider the thinking about what part of the sona, to help your people for you and even the people in their district, because it's like your heart here and you do what part of the sona. Please, I wish for you, thank you. Do you have anything for a messenger? In that motion to a joint?
So motion to a joint, but today the breaking news is that several representatives of the House of Representatives, including Imbatto Speaker, uh, J. Fonati Kofa, um, have been, um, requested by the Liberian National Police to turn himself over to the leadership of the House of Representatives for further investigation into the fire incident at the house, uh, at the legislature. My name is Haji Masali, I let us say, thanks so much for watching Spoon TV, we are teaching out Liberia's best, we're bringing you live coverage here at the Monrovia City Hall, where the House of Representatives is, um, convening legislative session because of, um, the situation at the, um, at the Capitol Building, where they could not continue with that session. So we want to show you just, uh, some pictures from the, uh, the hall here, you can see Grand Kipma County Representative, uh, been to Masali, they're in conversation with our colleague from Monserado County, uh, District Five. Also Clarence Carr, there with his colleague from Grand Tidder County, they are all in conversation, so these are all start talking, uh, or start conversations, uh, with police. Uh, some of them have not met one another for some time because of, uh, the divided house. Now that this is a full house, you have, uh, members of the minority, members of the majority now convening in one, uh, our Legislative Assembly. This is Moban Briggs Mensah from Pond County, um, also in, uh, you can see the interaction between Ellie Ator, where from, from Maggibee and Emmanuel Tan from, uh, Monserado County, they are from the minority, they will have that, a conversation continuously, um, Steve Tikwa, uh, there you see, uh, the Grand Pass, um, Representative, they're shaking hands with some of the colleagues who he hasn't met, uh, for some time now because of he still made at the House of Representatives. So more networking is going on, uh, you can see more networking is going on, uh, among the lawmakers, and that is quite interesting, they have not met for quite a while. Monday will be the sona and, uh, the, the Speaker, um, um, Richard Nkunku, addressing an olive branch to the aggrieved lawmakers who have threatened to boycott, um, the sona, um, informing them of their legislative duty, attending the sona is part of their legislative duties, because you, you have to report to your, uh, consequence on the, you know, annual basis. On the annual basis, you have to report. So what will you tell them, um, that you didn't attend this sona because of some disagreement? So in urging them, whatever disagreement they have, they can bring it to the table and discuss it, but not to boycott a sona. So, uh, I'm just showing you pictures of these, um, lawmakers who are having their networking conversation. So we'll call it a day at the moment, my name is Haji Masali, it's a pleasure again, and I say thanks so much for watching Spoon TV.